We convened from closed session and I would like to make the following disclosure. By a five to zero vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the case of Allen v. City of Elk Grove as identified by the case number on the City Council meeting agenda. So with that, we will adjourn this special meeting at 6:01 PM. And at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting and the Elk Grove Finance Authority Regular Meeting Concurrent Agenda. Today is Wednesday, September the 25th, 2024. The time is 6:01 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting replays will be on Friday, September 27th at 1:00 PM and Monday, September 30th at 1:00 PM on Channel 14. Once posted, the recordings of this and previous meetings can be viewed on demand at the www.eltgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrocable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. The City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, Mayor, I'll be moving into the roll call. And for the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Spies.
Present.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brewer.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. Thank you. All right, next up is our land acknowledgement. Would the Vice Mayor please assist in the reading of the land acknowledgement?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Meowak, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for their descendants, the Wilton Rancho Ria tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resilience, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. Would Chief Davis please lead us?
... of the United States of America and to your mother, for which she stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please join us for a brief moment of silence. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, Clerk.
Under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will take us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements. And that one presentation is 4.1, the Historic Preservation Committee's annual update.
Wonderful.
Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Brewer, members of the Council, it's my pleasure to be in front of you again as the Chair of the Historic Preservation Committee. Kira's going to help me, and I want to tell you, we couldn't ask for a better staff member to assist us and to advocate for our needs, and we're very appreciative of that. We have a five-member committee. It also includes Nadia Melgoza, who's our Vice Chair, Dennis Buscher, who's your representative from the Elk Grove Historical Society, Brian Van Lent, Rachel Seamy. Our two new members are Shaveta Dalla and John Fraser. We meet on the second Mondays of every month at 6:00 PM as needed. And our alternates are new to us, and we're very excited about their participation on our committee because they bring some unique skills to us. I'd also, at this point, like to acknowledge Daniel Ming, who was on our committee for from 2018 to 2024, but due to employment demands, he left us. He was our Chair for several years, and he brought a real calm and cohesive type of attitude, so I would like to recognize him at this point. Your Historic Preservation Committee's purpose and tasks are to identify, designate, protect, enhance, and perpetuate the use of historical resources. We all -- what's interesting to me, and what many people don't understand, is historical resources are buildings, structures, objects, sites, cultural landscapes. They can be gardens, districts, and resources in our city that reflect special elements of the city's heritage and cultural diversity. I like to think of Elk Grove as a tree, and we see that tree on many of the things that we have. Our cultural resources are our roots. How we take care of our roots and how we feed our roots is how the rest of our city flourishes. I personally have the privilege of attending the Elk Grove 101 class this session, which I would advocate for anyone to attend. It's been very beneficial. But what I kept hearing again and again from participants there was what they enjoyed about Elk Grove is that we were respectful to our heritage. We did want preservation of who we were and where we came from. And I think that's especially important to the people who generationally have lived in this community, that we continue to respect the contributions that they've made. And that's part of historical resources. We provide recommendations on alterations to historical resources to the Development Services Director, Zoning Administration -- excuse me, Administrator and Planning Commission. And I would say that we do that quite vigorously. We also, when we're meeting with the applicants, we make recommendations to them, and in most cases, I will say that our applicants have been very open to that and have been able to meet us more than halfway in protecting the resources in our community. We believe as a committee that Elk Grove deserves the very best, and that if people want to come into our community, they want to become involved in our historical resources, or they own our historical resources, that we expect them to do the very best that they can in helping to preserve those. The other thing our committee is charged with, and there's a list of about 10 things that by charter we're charged with, and I'm not going to go into all that, but what I am going to say is that one of the things that we are charged with is performing advisory review of new buildings, structure, objects, and demolitions on lots within the historic area where the city has discretionary reviews, such as the SPA. So with the changes that are happening within the SPA or potentially could happen, as well as the infill that's taking place, our committee feels very strongly that we should be involved in that review and we should have input into that review. Because whenever anything takes place in a historic district, it affects that district, and we see that as part of our charge by charter. Thank you. This is my assistant. Isn't she nice? Projects. In 2024, we reviewed several projects. The Slow &amp; Low on Railroad Street, Old Town Pub, which is going to be called the Old Town Pub, which is at 9032 Elk Grove Boulevard. For those of us that have been around for a while, that used to be Bike America. Then it was also a little mini mart, and it's right next to the Science Center in Old Town. This is really an exciting project because that building has been vacant for a while. It is being brought up to code and will be an Old Town Pub. And it's also going to have seating on the outside, which has proven by the coffee house that has gone into Old Town. We really want that in Old Town, and people really want that. We also reviewed Tool Coffee House. That was interesting because the building where the coffee house is was originally added to the front of that Victorian in the 40s, and it was -- they repaired vacuum cleaners and things that could be repaired then. And they wanted to change the windows, because for those of you that will recall the building, the windows went all the way almost to the ground, and they said, "We need that for seating. Can we reach a compromise?" So our committee was able to meet with them, talk with them, reach a compromise on the windows. They also wanted to take out the front door. We said, "Nah, nah, 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 nah." That front door has been there for years, and when people think of that building, they think of the front door, so we compromised on that age-appropriate front door. And we see the result now, which has been hugely successful in Old Town. Nothing but positive reviews about that. Also reviewed, 8998 Elk Grove Boulevard, which will become a new restaurant. Again, in the past, was the home of the Elk Grove citizen at one time. It's Judge Tavner's house historically. It also became Bobalas -- Secret Garden was in there, and then Bobalas Garden went in there. That has been empty for a while. They started work on it. They were working on other projects they had, but they have restarted on that building. Was very excited to see that they had been taking off the old roof and they had been making sure the building had been secured. And that's one thing our committee also does, is we ask for constant updates on our historic resources, especially those within the SPA, that we know are vacant. How are they being taken care of? Are they in good care? Is there demolition by neglect going on? What exactly is going on, and what are the stumbling blocks? Do they need our assistance? Do they need referral to resources? Why, if they came to us for permit and they went through the whole Planning Commission and they got a permit, why, what's happening? Why are we not moving forward, and what can we do to assist them? So in that case, again, we talked about the doors, we talked about the windows, we talked about the outside, the accessory buildings, and how those were going to be used and how we can best keep that as a resource. Oh, it already changed. Oh, thank you. Our goals for the upcoming year in '24, '25. The Elk Grove Register of Historic Resources will be coming to you, so we can't really discuss that, but we have been working on that for some time. Our annual training, what a lot of people don't realize is our committee goes through annual training, so we're sure that we meet the requirements of the National Historic Register. We have secret things we have to look at so that when a project comes to us, we can look at all of those on behalf of the city and make our recommendations to the Planning Commission and to you, City Council. We are going to continue to maintain a strong relationship with Elk Grove Historical Society and the Old Town Foundation. We see them as resources to assist us in identifying other resources. A very excellent example would be when we were looking at what it will become the Old Town Pub, we could tell there had at one time been some decorative adhering to the roof of the building, but we couldn't find any pictures. Through our member, Dennis Buscher, we were able to go into the Elk Grove Historical Society Archives, excuse me, and we were able to find that. So now we can really restore, or they will restore, the building to what it did originally look like. We are going to participate in the review of the SPA guidelines and update. This is something I'm sure you all know is very close to my own personal heart, and we'll be helping to move those forward. And we're also going to continue to explore new historic resources. I'm a firm believer in that we have several historic resources in this community that we have not looked at, and that is, that will only benefit us as a city, once we can establish them and look at them. I want you all to know that there is something in the Charter that says that our committee is to perform functions as outlined by the City Council. Personally, I was in a profession where we call this "other duties as assigned," so that's what we feel it is, is that if you feel that there is something that the Historic Preservation Committee should be looking at, it is our pleasure, and we understand, we serve at your pleasure, and look forward to being able to provide you with anything that you believe the city might need. Did I forget anything? Oh, I do want to say that Mr. Jordan and I have already had a conversation, and it's my pleasure to be able to be working with him also. And Anthony Antonio, excuse me, Oblug has been a wonderful staff member also, so I did want to bring them to your attention and to thank them for all their hard work. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you so much for that excellent update, and I want to thank you for being just a dynamic chairperson and the committee members. This is an important group as we look to preserve our Old Town Elk Grove with such deep historical roots. So the work that you do just in the Historic Preservation Committee and then making yourself available for additional opportunities, particularly as we look at the Old Town SPA Guidelines Update, I think we're going to be calling as the "other duties as assigned" will be coming up. So thank you again for your willingness to step up.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Councilmember Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly.
Sorry, dear.
That's okay. Thank you. I just wanted to say my own personal thanks for your hard work and the entire committee. I think we can sometimes take our own history for granted, and it's just impressed upon me, your presentation is timely, because I just returned from a place where, in China, and I'm admiring all the historical buildings, but so much has been torn down for the sake of, you know, new growth and everything. And as a visitor, you're thinking, wow, what history they've lost out on, and some places over there are just now making historic preservation really important and part of their development going forward. But again, here, when we're at home, we can take our own history for granted. So thank you for your work in making sure that we don't do that and highlighting the importance of it. So appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
And if I might, excuse me, if I just might, Dennis Buscher's with us tonight. Is there any other members here that I'm not aware of? Oh, and Shaveta is here.
Excellent.
Anyone else? And I just wanted to acknowledge them, and thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thank you. All right, we will move on to our next item, which is public comment. Let's see here. All right, we have a few people signed up to speak. We will start with Margie Jones, followed by Tony Stratton.
The Strauss Festival of Elk Grove is here tonight to thank you for your ongoing support of the festival that you give every year. We appreciate it so much. Obviously, the cash donation you give, in-kind services, police services, trash services, and just to support in general makes such a difference. I think it's very appropriate that we're here tonight after the presentation on the Historical Society, because as many of you know that the Strauss Festival was founded 37 years ago by Iris Simbleman, and we just had our 35th performance this last July, which was two kingdom tournament, dueling kingdom tournaments and the princes trying to win the hand of the princes. And so it was really fun. We had audience participation, which was kind of new this year. We always try to change it up a little bit, bring something new in. But again, we want to thank you so much for ongoing support and all you do to make it happen every year. Our volunteer cast and crew give countless hours, but the fact that the festival continues to be free to all that would like to visit is unique to not only Elk Grove, Sacramento region, but I don't know if there's another festival anyplace like it. So we really appreciate that support that you've given. So tonight, we have, and I was going to do it and I forgot about it, but I want to introduce our board co-chairman, and my other board co-chairman is Beth Headland. And then we also have Raylan Springer, who's a busy lady. She's our CFO of the festival. She's also a producer. And most recently, she and her husband Jason were selected as the 2024 Citizens of the Year. So we're very proud of that. So obviously, we have a lot of community support and involvement, so we appreciate that. We're here tonight to bring a special picture to the Council to thank you, and this is a picture of the Friday night performance on the stage where several of the council members were able to come and present a check to the festival. So we have that for you as a remembrance and a thank you of all your support. So if you, I don't know if everybody would like to come down and receive it, or what you'd like to do, but it's here.
We can, you want to give it to the, we can either come down or if you want to give it to any one of our staffers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. All right. Next up is Tony Stratton.
Tony and I are going to swap spaces.
Okay, so Juan Fernandez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. I'm Juan Fernandez. I'm a resident of Waterman Meadows. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. On September the 5th, the previous tenants at 9245 Rancho moved out and appeared to leave behind at least three large canine police-style dogs. I was somewhat concerned about the animals' welfare, but admittedly, I was more concerned the dogs might start barking more than usual, and they might become more aggressive than usual if abandoned. My presumption was shared by my neighbor Catherine, who asked me if I could tell if the animals had food or water. She and her husband Steve offered to feed the dogs and provide water. We later learned they hadn't been abandoned. There was just an extended period of time they were left unattended, approximately 48 hours. Our other neighbor, Adam, around the corner on Cupertino, doesn't let his own dogs out in their yard as often, because these same German Shepherds are untrained, and they literally jump against the fence so aggressively that they've broken through the fence multiple times, and he's had to repair the fence. So he tries to limit his own dogs in his own yard because of the aggressive nature of the German Shepherds. My neighbor Tony is here tonight, and he's going to talk about his experience with animal control. And then on August 25th, our neighbor Dee, Ms. Perkins on the other side, called animal control about a puppy at the 9245 address that had been left outside in the rain and was yowling for at least five hours. She was told if the puppy had food and water, there was nothing animal control could do. I ask, how many times must animal control be contacted about the same address before they'll do more than just send a letter? On June 26th, Council was given a general staff report on noise. I'm sorry I missed that report. Animal Control Officer Humaly presented the animal noise definition and confirmed there are no explicit quiet hours that apply to barking. 10 minutes is the threshold, as defined 24 hours a day, 4:00 PM or 4:00 AM. And animal control officers are not available during non-shift hours, so if your issue is at 4:00 AM, you make note of it and they'll send a letter. I ask, if Council had a dog outside their child's window barking at 4:00 AM, if even two minutes would be too much? I realized also something in preparing to speak tonight. I can measure how impactful the barking is to my eighth-grade, 13-year-old son's sleep cycles, because his phone can record it. It can record when he gets woken up and how long it takes him to go back to sleep. If sleep isn't a quality-of-life issue, I don't know what is. I respectfully request Council re-review the definition of nuisance barking, possibly allocate funds towards recording technology to make the enforcement of any action data-driven, not using stopwatches, or being only defined by animal control shift hours. Perhaps we could enable animal control to offer dog ownership coaching or bark callers if the same address has been called in multiple times. Perhaps animal control might help mitigate when neighbors disagree on how much barking is too much barking. I'm almost done.
Thank you.
Nobody wants--
This is the time.
Nobody wants to hate their neighbor?
Thank you.
We're told to love our neighbor.
Thank you. Next up is Tony Stratton.
Listen, I am here. I live actually around the corner and two houses down from the backyard of this residence that has become a public nuisance and is disturbing the peace. These dogs are barking all day, every day, at any hour of the day or night. Okay? Now, I call animal control and they say, "Oh, we can't do anything about it," you know? What does it take? Well, you got to get a petition with five guys and, you know, record all this stuff. I don't work for animal control. That's their job, okay? If they get a, what they would probably, you know, what would be a legitimate request, they ought to be able to go out and do their job, okay? That ordinance, noise ordinance for dogs must have been written by a dog, because, I mean, barking, being allowed to bark for 10 minutes and then be quiet for 20 and 10 more, you get, the dog can bark literally a third of the day, okay? A third of the day, 24 hours a day, and that's okay with your ordinance, okay? That ordinance is a vacuous piece of paper, okay? It's a lot of words. It says nothing. There's no enforcement. There is nothing that says when animal control has to go, what animal, or what is the, or what they're supposed to do, okay? There's nothing like that, okay? So they can simply, "Sorry, we can't do anything about it," and hang up the phone. Well, it's not acceptable, okay? Especially when these dogs are, and it's not the only, especially when these dogs are going all the time, all day, okay? Now, you cannot ask neighbors to build a dossier on another neighbor or to walk up and talk to them these days. There's too much craziness going on, okay? So what I'm asking is that you put into effect something that requires animal control to investigate instances like this one, okay? What does it take, okay? I don't know what it takes, okay? I don't know, I don't know how many times you have to complain, okay? But they, I don't even know what--
Thank you, sir.
--they're supposed to be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Lynn Wheat, and that is our final speaker for public comment.
My name's Lynn Wheat, and tonight I'd like to share a few positive things that have gone on within our community. First, I want to thank all my supporters out there that have picked up on some of my crazy ideas, and we've made it happen. For instance, in 2016, I decided we needed to really think about preserving some of our heritage, and that is farming, which we're losing so much of as we annex properties into the city and put houses on it. So I came up with the concept of urban farming, and we were able to host a meeting that was well-attended by many. And the city, actually, one of the city staff took that concept up, and it was noticed, and they had a discussion about it. We have the Elliott Homes over at Bond &amp; Waterman. It was a great, wonderful group of people. We all worked together to make that a better project, and it did happen. One of the few successes, though, was that the residents there now are able to roll their trash cans up to their gates and into the back and not have it go over the bark that was the standard within our city. So I had noticed that in other areas, and I thought, "Let's talk about this." So we did, and we got them to put that under the conditions of approval. That was our one really big victory that came out of that. But my other victory is I have such wonderful friends, I now have trash can earrings. So this will be a memory for when I don't remember. So as we're considering, and we've heard our report from the Historical Preservation, I believe that we also need to look at preserving our rural area. And I became aware of a plan there that really is going to decimate that rural area. It will be the opening gate to ruining it. And I would plead with you to really consider where you're going to put your foot down on losing some very valuable rural residential and our-- on losing some very valuable rural residential and our history that so many before me that have since passed fought for that. And disclaimer, I do not live in that rural area, but once again, I consider all of Elk Grove my big backyard. So when Stone Lakes and those areas came out to protest CNU, I helped with that. I don't live anywhere near that. I've been working with residents that are concerned about the zoo. I don't live near that either. But I look at us all as deserving a great quality of life. It doesn't matter your ethnicity. It doesn't matter your income level. We all deserve to think, would I want to live there? Would I want that in my backyard? So I continue to advocate. I thank you very much, friends that are listening and watching, for helping give me the strength. And I praise God for giving me the strength. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is our final public comment. So we will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and move on to our next agenda item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, Jason Berman, City Manager. Just a few items to report on this evening. First, just to look back last week, we had a very successful pitch Elk Grove. Many council members were there, helping to recognize those that were the great winners of that event. But it's a great opportunity where we get to showcase the city's support for the entrepreneurship and innovation that happens within our community and the greater region, as well as the city's support for those new startup businesses. The city has also partnered with Delilah and Moser Apartments, which has changed, it used to be Poppy Grove, it's now Moser Apartments, to conduct a lottery to provide access to more than 700 new affordable housing units to those who need it most. Income eligibility requirements, details about these properties and registration for the lottery can be found on the city's website. The lottery closes on October 20th. Residents are encouraged to participate in a community survey currently underway to evaluate our broadband needs in the community, challenges and future opportunities. Data collected will be used to explore broadband access options. Details are also available on our website. And finally, the last couple of weeks, the city held two open houses, on September 12th and September 16th, and spoke to over 100 residents about the new year-round shelter at Calvary Christian Center in Elk Grove. Tonight's council agenda is a staff recommendation to partner with the nonprofit, The Gathering In. The shelter will provide compassionate care and wraparound services for up to 35 Elk Grove residents who may be having difficulties securing housing on their own through October 2028, while the city works to identify a suitable permanent location. We're also going to have another open house just prior to the opening of the shelter. The date to be determined depends on the actual opening date of that shelter, where we'll invite community members to come in and check out how it's all set up. So, and that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right. Thank you for your report. Any questions, comments? Yes, council member, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a quick question. Jason, when are those affordable housing units going to actually be available? The lottery closes Sunday, but, no, that's when the lottery closes.
The lottery closes October 20th.
Yeah. When are the affordable housing units going to be available?
The developers of both projects are telling us that the first buildings will open in December this year.
Okay.
And then they'll be phased in as buildings are completed and get their certificate of occupancy through June next year. We will just be having the one lottery, though, for the whole project.
Right. Okay. So December. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you for your report. That takes us to our next item, which is our consent calendar items. I will go ahead and open up public comment. Nobody has signed up to speak for this. I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve consent.
I'll move consent. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item, 8.1.
An 8.1 is a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the fiscal year 2023-24 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, aka the CDBG caper.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. I have four items in a row tonight. First three, hopefully, are quick. So this caper is our annual report that goes to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. It is a required report. We prepared it, shared information on the projects that we funded last year, including many public services, as well as some curb ramp improvements. And we put it out for public comment for the required 15 days. To date, we've not received any public comment on that. So we are asking the council to approve it tonight so that we can get it submitted to HUD this week. Happy to answer questions.
Nice and short. All right. At this time, I will open up the public hearing and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close up, close public comment and declare that the public hearing is not closed. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
Still moved?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Do you want me to introduce it, Sarah? I can. I'll save you a little bit of, it's a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving amendments to the Community Development Block Grant Citizen Participation Plan for 2020 to 2025 Consolidated Plan and the 2024-25 Action Plan, and authorize the filing of documents required to receive funds from the Home Investment Partnerships programs and making subsequent budget adjustments.
Great. Yes. This one is also related to our HUD funding. For the first time this year, we are eligible to receive home funds. Previously, we got our home funds through the state and we didn't often get them. We weren't terribly competitive compared to many of the rural communities in the state. And so this year, HUD determined that we were large enough, we were getting a large enough allocation to qualify directly. So we will be, we are proposing to be a home-participating jurisdiction, which, like with our CDBG funding, will give us an annual allocation. This first year's allocation is anticipated to be about $359,000. Home funds are meant more for use specifically on affordable housing. So what we're proposing to do with these funds is to put them into the pool for making loans for new affordable housing developments, pairing them with our Affordable Housing Fund. So in order to do that, we had to amend a number of our plans to reference the home funds and share how they would be spent. And so we're asking the council tonight to approve those amendments to our Consolidated Plan Citizen Participation Plan and Action Plan.
All right. Very good. At this time, I will declare the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity for this. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll declare the public hearing is not closed and close the public comment opportunity. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
Still moved?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 8.3 is a public hearing to consider resolution approving amendment number five to the Community Development Block Grant 2019-20 Action Plan.
Yes. Great. So this particular item is the reallocation of some of our COVID-related CDBG funding. We've looked for various ways to spend that over the years. Some of the ways that we'd planned to spend it, the state created a parallel program, or SHRA created a parallel program, and our initial allocations would have been duplicative. So we've worked with HUD, and they have identified that programs that benefit people experiencing homelessness are ineligible use that has the appropriate tieback to COVID. So what we are proposing to do is to take our remaining CDBG CV funding and put it towards our shelter operations in this next year. And looking to have our action plan amended to allow that.
All right. Excellent. I will declare the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up for this. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments? If not, I will look for a motion.
Still moved?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
I'll take us to Section 9 of Regular Agenda Action Items and Recommendations, starting with item 9.1, which is to consider a resolution executing contract with The Gathering In to provide year-round homeless shelter operations.
All right. This is my longer item. So I do have a presentation here for you on our homeless shelter operations contract award. So just a little bit of background as we start talking about homelessness. It has a lot of definitions that are used by different agencies. What the school district uses is different than what some other federal agencies use. And so tonight, when we're talking about homelessness, we are really talking about people who are living in a place not meant for human habitation, people who are living outdoors or in a vehicle primarily. We are not talking about folks who are couch surfing or, you know, living temporarily with friends or family. A little bit of history on the city's sheltering efforts. So back in 2013, Elk Grove Heart started their Elk Grove Winds program. That was a nightly shelter. Folks could walk up and get in line for it each night that they offered during the winter months. It rotated between different churches, serving up to 25 people nightly. Usually, they had fewer, but in bad weather, they might max out on that. They took folks from Elk Grove United Methodist and drove them to whichever church was serving that week. And unfortunately, after COVID, the model really proved not to be viable anymore. It was entirely volunteer-run. So we, after a few years of evaluation, last winter, the city funded the Enhanced Winter Sanctuary. That was a little different model. We had a 24/7 shelter, referral-only. So folks had to speak with one of our navigators to get into the shelter. We partnered with The Gathering In last year after a proposal process and ran the shelter from the former Rite Aid building and future Elk Grove Library in Old Town from November to April. We served up to 30 people per night and overall served 62 people over the course of the season and helped 20 of them get into permanent housing. So when we think about the need for shelter, I wanted to share some of the statistics and studies that have been done recently that help to support the need for a shelter. The Point in Time Count is something that's done every two years, and it's done at the county-wide level. It's actually done nationally. Every continuum of care nationwide, over a two-week period in January, does this survey of homelessness. This year, the Point in Time Count identified a decrease from 2022. Overall, we had about 6,600 people experiencing homelessness. Of those, a little less than 4,000 were unsheltered. That was a pretty significant decrease in unsheltered homelessness, 41%. Regionally, we're doing quite well on sheltering families. Only 3% of our homeless families were not in shelter, but not doing as well with our single adults, 71% being unsheltered. The Point in Time Count releases jurisdictional numbers only for the unsheltered homeless population. And they estimated last year that there were 83 people experiencing homelessness in Elk Grove. That was 2.1% of the county's total. On a per capita basis, we have the lowest homelessness rate of the major cities in Sacramento County. However, we did see an increase from 2022, and we think that that was primarily due to better mapping. We really worked closely with Sacramento Steps Forward. Our police department and homeless outreach team provided a lot of great information to them so that they would know where to find folks to get that accurate count. Adding in the folks that we know were sheltered around that time in our Enhanced Winter Sanctuary would bring us to about 108 people experiencing homelessness overall. So we've also done a couple of surveys of our residents around homelessness in the last six months. The National Community Survey is a very large survey covering a lot of topics that the city does annually. We did include a few questions this time, custom questions around homelessness. Our residents, 58% felt that homelessness was a major or moderate problem. A little more than half felt that homelessness was worse than a year ago. Only 33% felt our approach to homelessness was good or excellent, so definitely some room to improve there. But when asked how they saw the city's approach in comparison to other cities in the region, it was much more favorable, and 58% said we were doing better. We did a more in-depth survey using one of our partners, Zen City. They did an online survey aimed at getting representative sampling of our resident demographics, and they did this in April this year. Overall, the results aligned pretty closely with the National Community Survey, which gives us a good deal of confidence in the Zen City results. Similar to the NCS, 58% of folks reported homelessness was a major or moderate problem. We went further to ask them what they thought about their own neighborhood. And far fewer people said that homelessness was a problem in their neighborhood, only 30%. We asked people what they thought were the main causes of homelessness. Mental health and addiction issues were the most reported. People could choose more than one of these. People also reported lack of income, lack of affordable housing, and lifestyle choice as highly common circumstances. In the Zen City survey, 27% of people said the city was good or excellent at dealing with homelessness. Although, interestingly enough, that number jumped much higher if you've moved here in the last five years. So recently arriving residents thought we were doing better than our longtime residents. 44% said we were doing better than other cities. We did ask people which measures they would support to address homelessness. Of course, folks supported outreach and social services. That's an easy one. That was our top-ranked measure. But coming in second, which surprised me, was temporary shelters, showing that our community recognizes that there is a need for that. We asked people what they would support in the city and then what they would support in their own neighborhood. For temporary shelters, only 37% of people said they would support it in their neighborhood. But when you look at people who said they would be neutral to it, we get to 54% support or neutral in their own neighborhood. Affordable housing initiatives was also supported by more than half of folks, and it was generally accepted in neighborhoods with support or neutral at 61%. Permanent supportive housing, a little bit lower there, but still enjoyed, a lot of folks reporting that they would support it or be neutral towards it in their neighborhood. Not scoring very well, which was a surprise, was eviction prevention. People weren't terribly interested in helping people stay in their homes, but did recognize some of these other measures were needed in the community. So another big thing, and I know that you've heard about this at a previous council meeting, too, is some changes that have happened in the legal landscape. So the city of Grants Pass versus Johnson was a Supreme Court decision earlier this summer that kind of returned to jurisdictions the ability to do some broader enforcement of encampments and people living on public property. In response to that, Governor Newsom also issued an executive order encouraging the removal of encampments. So we are seeing a lot more activity in the encampment realm. Many other cities in our region are being much more active in moving people from encampments. And, you know, keeping pace with that, the city council adopted ordinance 122024, which is an update to our own anti-camping ordinance, which will become effective October 11th. Those changes are helpful in moving folks and disbanding encampments, but they don't actually provide any place for people to go. So just a quick recap here. We have about 100 people experiencing homelessness at a given time. We're seeing our residents really want to see homelessness addressed. They are excited to hear about better enforcement of homelessness in public spaces and generally acknowledge that if you are going to do that enforcement, you also have to have a place for people to go. And we are seeing with that new level of enforcement, we are seeing a lot more folks interested in taking shelter. Even folks who last year said, no, thank you, are now saying, okay, you know what? When's it going to open? I'm ready. I don't want to be chased around by the cops. So what we are proposing, based on our learnings from last year and some of the needs that we've been hearing, is a year-round shelter, serving up to 35 adults per night. So our shelter last year served 35. We are proposing, or, sorry, served 30. We are proposing that same 30 to have regular beds in We are proposing that same 30 to have regular beds in the shelter this year, but also to have five emergency beds. When PD finds someone who really urgently needs shelter, we want to have a place to take them. That can, that can also be used in severe weather or with highly vulnerable folks. Occasionally, we have really elderly folks who find themselves homeless. We want to have a place to go for those folks, even, even if those 30 regular beds are full. So the shelter would open November 1st. And for the regular 30 beds, be a consistent place for folks to stay. They could stay all, all day at the shelter. It is a 24-hour model. And they can come and go as they need to, as they have appointments or, you know, other business in the community. That reduces the impact on the neighborhood by making sure that you don't have queuing at the shelter. Not everyone is lining up to enter at 6:00 PM. Not everybody is kicked out at, at 6:00 AM. And so you have a much more natural flow of folks throughout the day. The 24-hour day model also allows for more intensive services. And we have, we have some really great services planned this year. It also accommodates shift workers. Many of our homeless folks have jobs. Some of them work on swing shift or overnight shifts. And so we, you know, need a place to sleep during the day. We want our folks to work. That's what helps them get into housing. And so having a shelter that can accommodate that is very helpful. We also recognize that people find it very difficult to part with their pets. They, they might be the only sense of family that person has. And so the shelter is planned to allow pets. That was successful last year. And then we saw a number of our folks with pets get in and ultimately some get housed. And possessions. So the shelter will allow two of the, the big plastic bins per person of belongings so that people can keep their personal documents, some amount of clothing and, and other important items. One really important note about the shelter is that it is referral only. This is not someplace that someone can be dropped up, off and walk in. And the only referral pathway that we have for this is through our Elk Grove navigators and PD. Everyone is vetted. It's very important to us. We are paying for this. We want our residents to benefit from this. Our navigators are great at vetting that. How long has someone been here? What is their tie to Elk Grove? Why are they here? How did they become homeless? And making sure that we're really focused on helping our residents, especially as we're seeing folks come from encampments near our borders as those encampments are cleared. Our goal is to help those folks get help where they were living and to make sure that our shelter is available only to folks who have that tie to Elk Grove. And as I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of services planned for the shelter. We learned last year that case management really needs to be required. The people staying at the shelter need to be participating actively in an individualized plan so that they can move on to housing. This year, we have, our service provider that we're recommending, The Gathering Inn, has a workforce development specialist, one full-time person devoted to helping folks find employment, find legal employment, above, above-table employment so that they can document income and ultimately get into housing. They'll also be providing mental health and substance use referrals for folks who need that. And of course, three meals a day at the shelter plus snacks and water. And the food bank last year was a great partner in this and we expect to work with them again in providing a lot of the food. So safety and security is always an issue. The facility will not serve Megan's Law-registered sex offenders, people who can't operate appropriately in a shelter setting, people who have challenges that might prevent that. And there are no drugs or alcohol use allowed onsite. We've worked really closely with our PD. In fact, our, our PD team was out there again today, working with, working to figure out where the best placement for the cameras is. There will be a number of interior and exterior security cameras covering, covering a lot of the site and a minimum of three staff onsite at all times, which is one more staff person than we had last year onsite. And a nightly curfew. So residents won't be coming and going at all hours of the night. If you want to come in after, after 9:00 or 10:00 PM, you'd need to have a valid reason for that, like you just got off your work shift. So the location that we identified after a, after a lot of searching, what is the Calvary Church facility? So the city leased a portion of the Calvary Church facility through October 2028. The church will continue to operate there as well as the Spanish ministry that's currently renting a portion of that facility. This is not meant to be the long-term home for the, for the shelter. And so we will be looking at more options for a long-term home starting in 2025. In, in moving forward with Calvary, we looked at a lot of other options. We looked at city-owned buildings. The city really doesn't have anything that's appropriate for this use that's not already in use. We looked at leasing existing commercial and industrial buildings and found that a lot of those have CCNRs, just like a lot of homes do, and, and that that would prevent this type of use. And we looked at using vacant city-owned property, which long-term is still an option that, that exists, but getting something built in the timeframe that we had just wasn't possible. So we've planned a lot of improvements at the Calvary site. You can see here is a picture of the inside. This will be the main area for the shelter, the main sleeping area. We will be installing a lot of security cameras inside and outside. We'll be fencing off the area that is the shelter's leased area so that people will have a gate to come in, a vehicle gate and a pedestrian gate, but otherwise will be separated from the rest of the church facility. There's some roofwork that has to be done, some HVAC repairs. And then we have an assortment of other improvements that will make the building more usable. One thing that we heard from the neighborhood was that they were interested in having some of the sidewalk repair done and the landscaping improved there. And so that's something that we're including in our plan to get the building ready before, before November 1st. So we know that the community was very interested in this and, and concerned about this. And so staff worked to hold two open houses on September 12th and 16th and provide an opportunity for folks to just learn a little bit more about the shelter and how it would operate. We shared the city's commitment to making sure the shelter operates well. I am very committed to that. I want this to be a successful project. And so we will be sharing more ways for residents to get in touch with both the city and with the operator if they're seeing any challenges associated with the shelter. We got a range of feedback at the meeting. Not everyone was happy about this, of course, but I think that the meetings did lead folks to have a little bit better understanding of what was happening there and maybe did alleviate some of the fears. So the city leased the building, but the city will not be the provider for the shelter services. We need a partner for that. So we released a request for proposals in July, looking for qualified service providers that have run the shelter programs. And we were specific about what we wanted in terms of the 24/7 year-round model. We got three proposals. Two of them had experience providing shelter and, and were able to deliver on the 24-hour model. So we did interviews with those two providers, after which we determined that the Gathering Inn proposal would best align with the city's needs. So we are recommending The Gathering Inn as the shelter provider for this year. Gathering Inn provided services to our Enhanced Winter Sanctuary last year, so you're probably a little bit familiar with them. They've worked in Placer County and Roseville since 2004. They currently have several locations and serve over 250 households a day. And they really focus on providing quality services to help folks move on to permanent housing. Their onsite staffing this time includes a full-time program director, two full-time case managers, who will be meeting with folks at least weekly and often more to help them with their plan to move forward and get housed. The workforce development specialist, which I mentioned, an engagement specialist who's really focused on working with the community, on opportunities for volunteering and donations, but also sharing, sharing impacts of the shelter with the community. And then 14 FTEs for shelter monitors so that we can have three people onsite at all times. So The Gathering Inn, we require them to have certain good neighbor strategies. They'll provide a single point of contact for the community and neighbors around. They're obligated to respond to community concerns within 48 hours. And we are planning to circulate in coordination with the open house information on how to contact them and how to contact city staff if there are any problems. And they plan to do some community, some additional community engagement. So TGI participated in our community open houses that we held in September. And they will also lead the open house that we plan to have before the facility opens to residents. So sometime in late October. An open invitation for community members to stop by the shelter to see how it works and how it's running. And plenty of volunteer opportunities if anyone would like to go and serve a meal in particular. So the, the TGI contract would be a one-year contract with the potential for two one-year extensions. The first year is about $1.5 million, about $4.5 million over the three years. And we have a whole lot of funding sources that we are fortunate to be able to use for this. The CDBGCV, which you just approved, are some of our American Rescue Plan Act funds that are remaining. We have some state funding called Permanent Local Housing Allocation that we're going to be looking at using, and of course, Measure E funding. So we also, in addition to the TGI contract, have to cover the leasing for the building, some of the building improvements, which are very much front-loaded. We'll do a lot of the improvements upfront and then hopefully not have to do much in the next couple of years and ongoing pay for the utilities. So what we're asking council to do tonight is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with The Gathering Inn for the shelter operations, which includes a license to use the leased space at Calvary Christian with a total contract value of about $4.5 million over the three years. Happy to answer all your questions.
We'll probably save those questions for later. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. And we have several people signed up to speak. We will start with Lee Cobb, followed by Debbie Shana Schaefer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lee Cobb and I am the program manager over at the Elk Grove Food Bank Services. We commend the city, the staff, officials and staff for taking this important step to address homelessness in our community and provide a solution for these individuals who are seeking assistance and are trying to acquire permanent housing for themselves. Last year, we were closely with The Gathering Inn, who did a fantastic job of facilitating the Enhanced Winter Sanctuary. Our director, Marie Jakina, worked closely with The Gathering Inn to provide food for the residents. We provided breakfast, lunch and snacks. And it proved to be a great partnership and one that we hope to resume should The Gathering Inn be chosen to be the shelter operator once again. I personally worked with a lot of the guests at The Gathering Inn had at the Enhanced Winter Shelter last year. And we had honestly no issues over at the food bank with any of the guests that we helped with food, clothing, CalFresh services. It was a great experience for us. Personally, working with homeless individuals and the homeless population in Elk Grove has taught me some valuable lessons. I have learned that making a personal connection with people, and sometimes all it takes is 10 or 15 minutes in their day, showing that you care, being kind and just listening can have a very positive impact on their emotional health. Offering a hygiene kit, a clean set of clothing, a pair of shoes that's new to them, isn't, may not seem like a big deal to many of us, but to them, it can make a world of difference. Even to a mother living in a minivan with four small children who can't afford to buy diapers. Over the summer, we assisted a mom living in a minivan with four small children. The youngest was three months, the oldest was seven. Her little boy, who was four, said to me, "I just want some new shoes." The van was empty. There were no toys. There were a couple blankets and that was it. We fitted him with a pair of gently-used shoes from our clothes closet. And you'd have thought it was Christmas morning. The little boy jumped around as if he'd been given a new bike or the toy he'd been dreaming of all his life. And he just smiled until we shut that door on the minivan and mom drove off. My point is that there are people out there who just need someone to believe in them, someone to care. Offering kindness and providing support to a better life can help them see the possibility of a better life. The shelter can absolutely help folks like that. At the food bank, we pride ourselves on nourishing and providing food to the food insecure, which food is a basic human need. But there's another four-letter word that we can provide in abundance, and that is hope. Thank you.
Next up is Debbie, followed by Mark Hedlund.
Greetings. Thank you for the privilege of speaking to you regarding The Gathering Inn. My name is Debbie Shana Schaefer and I am on the board of Elk Grove Heart. We started Heart in 2010 during the economic downturn. We are an all-volunteer organization that works closely with our city staff, the school district, our police force and the faith community, as well as other organizations that are concerned about the unhoused. This past winter, we had the opportunity to work directly with The Gathering Inn during Elk Grove's winter shelter. It was a learning opportunity to spend with those that participated. Our goal was to support the unhoused in meeting their needs as they worked to climb out of their desperate lifestyle. If they were looking for work, we got them appropriate clothes and footwear, often steel-toed boots. We helped them to get their cars registered so they could get to work. We helped supply bus passes and bicycles, whatever they needed. We were there encouraging them to take the next right move out of a paralyzing lifestyle. A shocking 21 people found permanent housing coming out of the winter shelter. We furnished a deaf man's room, including a new recliner and bedding. While he had no words, the smile on his face said it all. A young mom who was separated from her three young daughters because they had no home. She was able to stabilize at the shelter and worked hard at her job to move them into a new apartment the week before Christmas. Heart and our community fully furnished their place, including a Christmas tree and presents for the children. There was another woman who works at one of our local hotels, a couple who's been living in their car for four years, even though both of them work. They are now all permanently housed. There are 21 of those stories. So many lives were changed because of the shelter. The Gathering Inn did a beautiful job of caring for the unhoused in our community. We had their staff's personal numbers and consulted with them on a regular basis. They welcomed community support and worked well with us. We have learned so much from that experience. This go-around will be even better because we have more tools to encourage them and change the lives of our unhoused. I am so proud of our city council and our amazing city staff that have the courage to address this issue. There is a reason why Elk Grove doesn't look like downtown Sacramento. As I like to say, Heart doesn't own the homeless. They're part of our community. Please, let's treat them as such. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark Hedlund, followed by Gina Pernetti.
Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Mark Hedlund. I'm on the board of Elk Grove Heart. And I'm here to applaud the city for stepping up and providing a year-round shelter for the unhoused. and providing a year-round shelter for the unhoused. It is definitely overdue. As many of you know, I helped run the prior Elk Grove Heart Winter Sanctuary for seven seasons, and I worked with the city on the OWL program initially. It was necessary, we were the only game in town, it was rewarding. But it was extremely challenging to try and do that only with volunteers. We had no way to accommodate pets. We couldn't store people's stuff, which is very important. And during the day, they had to go about their business and then queue up and come back later at night. And we didn't really have caseworkers, although we tried to work with folks as best we can. One thing we did learn also is the point-in-time counts are not necessarily accurate because the folks out there know when the point-in-time counters are coming, and some of them don't want to be counted, so they split. So the numbers are probably a little bit higher than we think. It is critical to have an experienced, well-organized professional group to run this kind of a program. By all appearances, the Gathering In has done an excellent job in running last year's, or last winter's Enhanced Sanctuary. To my knowledge, none of the problems that people had feared with the Enhanced Winter Sanctuary actually came to pass. And that's because the procedures were well-thought-out and executed by Sarah Bontrager and her team and the Gathering In. Now it's time to take a significant step forward to help the unhoused, giving them the opportunity to get out of that situation. This is what our voters indicated when they passed Measure E. Sarah and her team worked hard to get this location. It's a good location, and I attended both the outreach meetings at the site. And Jason and Sarah, Chief Davis, and the navigators were there to answer people's questions and concerns. They did a great job. There's been a lot of effort to get to this point. We need to seize the opportunity and help these folks who are in need. Now is the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next up is Gina Pernetti, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Hello, good evening. My name is Gina Pernetti. Thank you for allowing me to comment. I am a 30-year resident of Elk Grove. I raised my family here, and I also serve on the Board of Elk Grove Heart. I also live a half-mile from the location of the city's winter shelter that was managed by the Gathering In this last year in East Elk Grove. I walk by that location on a daily basis, exercising, walking my pup, as well as frequent all the businesses in the area. We call it four corners. Not once did I experience any situations or issues with residents at the shelter. I did notice and was aware of consistent police presence, as were many in the surrounding area. I spoke often to my neighbors about this. The neighboring community was just as safe as it ever was. I fully support the city's permanent shelter, the proposed location, and the Gathering In as the shelter management, as it will provide much-needed long-term shelter and wraparound services needed to break the cycle of homelessness for individuals and families, much like Debbie shared. This is a complete and proven solution that helps to end the topic, the issue of homelessness. So I encourage the city council to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Lynn Wheat, followed by Nick Golling.
Good evening. I will just ditto everybody else's comments, but add that I know that it can be challenging to find a place where we set up a shelter, especially a year-round shelter, when there's not a lot of talk about it, and what is talked about are fears. And so I appreciate the excellent job the staff did in hosting the open houses where people, the residents of the area, could come and ask the questions. I attended the daytime one, and I thought it was well-attended. I thought, again, staff did an excellent job with their presentations and how they were setting things up. I think as we continue to communicate with our community around, and they hear the good things that are coming out of our shelter, that this will be positive. And I will hope that in the future, when we're looking for that permanent shelter, I mean, I wouldn't mind if it was right in my neighborhood. Because I want people to be close to where they can get to work, where they can walk, and where they can be integrated within our community. I don't want them isolated out. As I've discussed before, we are a very diverse community. Unfortunately, I see us building economic, not diversity, not diversity economically. We are segregating, as we've done with our affordable apartment complexes. I want to see that changed, and this could be a step. Also, I'm very proud to say, when I've gone to other cities and they've shared with me their homeless issues, I was able to talk about the team of officers that we have here, the navigators, and how proactive our council's been. And that I even wished that to be in the newsletter more often because I've talked to residents here that were completely unaware of the services that we're offering and how we're trying to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Nick Golling, followed by Keith Diedrich.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. First thing I wanted to mention, Sarah, in my public service career, I think three was the maximum items that I had in one evening. So congratulations on beating my record. Just wanted to talk a little bit about collaboration. Homelessness is a complex issue. It affects all of us, and it affects every community. And the degree to which you can be effective in addressing that complex issue is directly correlated to the amount of collaboration that can be done across the aisle, that can be done across the private and the public sector. The Gathering In is so gracious for the opportunity that we had in the Enhanced Winter Sanctuary to operate that program. And we learned some things in that program, and some of which we plan to apply with the future year-round program. And some of the things that we learned first and foremost is that this is a really special community. This is a special community through and through the amount of support, the amount of hands that came in to help this to be a success, both on the public side and on the private side, I have not seen anywhere else prior to this experience. But there's some other things that we noticed, too. So with the opportunity we have before us with a year-round program is an opportunity to learn from what happened over the Enhanced Winter Sanctuary and then apply changes to make improvements. So one of the things that we see at the Gathering In and the programs that we provide is oftentimes we're seeing an influx of older adults. But we saw, because we look at data all the time, we saw with the program at the Enhanced Winter Sanctuary is that about 60% of the people that we served were between 18 and 44 years of age. So that's prime working age. So what we have is we had this concept that we worked on, a pilot, that we now can take the experience from that pilot and put it towards the opportunities we have before us in the future, which is that people experiencing homelessness in this community tend to be more of consistent working age, which is why we have that workforce development specialist that Sarah spoke to you all about. So it's like a tailor fit to this community, which I think fits with this community because of the unique compassion that we see here in this town. So really appreciate your consideration, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your remarks. Next up is Keith Diedrich, followed by Christina Albright.
Madam Mayor, council members. Keith Diedrich, President/CEO of the Gathering In. Thank you for your consideration, for us to be your provider again. I want to thank Sarah, Jason, and the entire staff, chief, for what a great experience the Enhanced Winter Sanctuary was when we ran it. And I want to just talk a little bit about the Grants Pass decision. A lot of municipalities are going the other direction. They're going more towards the enforcement and less towards the service. And you guys are doing it a different way. Yeah, you had a resolution, you know, to do a little bit more of the enforcement if you need to, and I get that. But not very many municipalities in this country, given that Grants Pass decision, are opening a new shelter for people to go to. And I commend the council for your leadership, because these things are not easy. They are not easy. We're in a lot of communities, and trust me, some of these things are not easy. And I think you know all of what I'm talking about. It's not easy. But I just want to commend you as a council for your leadership to open a year-round shelter. And I promise you that if you do at the end of tonight, select us to run this shelter, we will do and repeat and do better than we did the first time. So thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Christina Albright.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm going to be the only standout that stands up here by myself and tells you how disappointed I am in you that you didn't seek any community input before deciding on a $5-million contract, essentially. That is over $150,000 per bed for what, by your own numbers and your own report, is for about 83 people who cannot stay more than six months each. There is no commitment, that I've seen by any of you, to take any community input in this. Not one of you showed up to the two meetings. I went from beginning to end of each of those meetings. And the Temporary Winter Sanctuary last year had several times I think that people were allowed to speak. I use the term "meeting" very loosely because that was not a meeting. As my husband and I are both retired from the city of Elk Grove as employees, we're both quite aware of what it looks like to try and circumvent the system and have people not really have a chance to have a voice or be able to rally up and speak in opposition of something like this. It was done in secrecy. It was obviously done in secrecy because a day after the lease was signed, all of a sudden, there's community meetings and a 227-page report that comes out a few days later. I would like, as a member of this community who's been here my whole life, third-generation Elk Grovean, who's lived here my entire life, who's gone from kindergarten through high school in this town, the commitment of each of you to open up for this permanent shelter that's supposedly going to take place in 2025, that the rest of us get to be part of that discussion. I understand that this is a done deal, and there's nothing I can say. I live 900 feet, my front door, to the front door of this place. That church has been an eyesore, and it is low-hanging, fiscally poor fruit right now because they are struggling. Yes, the sidewalks and the tree branches and all those things. I loved the idea that you guys are going to come in there and clean it all up. But frankly, putting chain-link fences and showers and outdoor toilets, and if we've got dog runs and whatever, because not everybody seemed to have known exactly how that's going to play out when I went to the community meetings. And when I went from booth to booth, someone said, "Oh, go ask that person that." And I went over and asked them, and I said, "Well, they said they're going to have this." "We're not going to have that, there's no plans for that." So I think you guys got ahead of yourselves and did this little secret squirrel deal that you did before getting any input from the community. That there's an elementary school, that there's two detox houses, there's multiple elderly care and disabled dependent adult care homes within 1,000 feet of that place. I would like the commitment from each city council member to seek more community input, whether you need to come up with, you know, we've got councils for every stinking thing in this town. We've got trails and trash and the chief's council and everything else. I want there to be a council for the homeless project in this town. And I would like to have it be well-represented by nonprofits, by citizens that live in all different areas, by business owners, and everyone who's going to be affected by this. So I would like a commitment from the city to be able to be more involved in any dialogue going forward about a permanent location, please.
Thank you. Okay. That concludes our public comment. So I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity. And Sarah, you can probably answer questions from there. So I will start to the right. We'll start with Councilmember Robles.
Thank you for that presentation, Sarah. Thank you for everyone for just being here tonight. Obviously, this is a topic that should be had in our region. This is, we're doing an investment of $4.5 million. And seeing both sides, I completely understand, and I do believe that we need more community engagement. Unfortunately, what I've seen as well is that several people don't attend until there's something that comes before us. But I wholeheartedly agree that we need to have more community engagement in all areas, not just this one, in all areas. So I always encourage residents to continue participating on that. Because we all are here to listen, to make Elk Grove an amazing home to live. And for the Gathering In, I've been able to see and witness what you all have been doing in our community and the lives that you've changed. I know that folks only go through their navigator, but I was able to work with you guys directly when an incident occurred. And it was probably one of the worst storms that we had. And you guys are people-centered and people-focused. Thank you for the hard work that you're doing. You're right, not everybody agrees, especially in the state of California, on what to do. But I want to make sure folks understand, like, we're taking a step forward as Elk Grove in this region when others will either throw a large amount of money and not see any change in their streets and in their areas. I know that when it comes to homelessness and homeless shelters and operations, folks... I think it was Ms. Wheat that said "fear." That's true. People fear the unknown. But we also need to love and show compassion. Doesn't matter where you come from. And I know that sometimes when we see these people, whether it's by what they're wearing or how they look, we can have prejudgments. That's just what occurs, right? But for us, it's dropping those prejudgments and making sure that we accept people for who they are and meet them where they are, right? To make sure that we can engage and get them better. I'm trying not to, you know, overly communicate because I think this is an issue that obviously we're not all going to solve today in California, right? But this is an issue that we can help move towards the right direction in our city. And Nick, you'd mentioned, you know, what you've learned from the outcomes, you know, the bads and the goods and what happened last year. I know your prior service, so it sounds like an AAR to me. But that's what, you know, you do. You learn, you grow, you develop. You morph into what it's going to be now, and then go from there. So thank you for addressing that. And also, Keith, I know the work that you've been doing in and out, and truly just caring for folks. So thank you for the work that you're doing as we continue. And I would love to hear more of what my council colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Spies?
Alrighty. So I do have actually a lot to say on this. I'm going to try to keep it as short as possible. But I did, again, write it out because I want to be certain that I get everything said that I need to say. So from a personal perspective, as I've mentioned several times before, I have a family member who's unhoused. And I can tell you, what I can tell you is that our family wishes that we could find a solution to the problems that plague our family member. The sadness and grief can be overwhelming. To watch a loved one deteriorate while living in squalor is heartbreaking. I know the burden our family member and others like them can have on our community. I see it every day in the city of Elk Grove. I receive emails and phone calls. And in the middle of the pandemic, I was called upon to find shelter and transportation for a disabled veteran out of his encampment behind a cell phone store so that he could be in an environment clean enough to change his ostomy bag. Now, I'm not saying this because I'm looking for a humanitarian award because the other side of it is that I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer, too. I want my streets clean. I don't want to have to trip over people who, in some cases, have made unfortunate choices. Nor do I want to see people suffering from situations that are not of their choice at all. As a taxpayer, I expect my city to be a good steward of my money and a protector of public safety for all residents. So I'd like to remind folks about a revelation I talked about last time, about homelessness. A friend of mine, Pastor Jay Reed, at the Light of the Valley Church, reminded me that there are problems that you can solve, and there are problems that you can manage. And so I need to remind you all that the city of Elk Grove doesn't have the scope of control nor finances to solve the homeless problem. I can tell you that the city of Elk Grove is committed to managing the problem as best we can, as we are expected to do by the residents. Our city team takes management of the homeless problem seriously and will continue to do so through a multi-pronged approach. But tonight is specifically about a year-round temporary shelter. And I've had the opportunity to do a lot of reflecting on this over time, and I kind of came up with two guiding principles in this. And of course, there's a religious tone to them. One of them is whatsoever you do to my brothers and sisters, that you do unto me. That was in the Book of Matthew, chapter 25, verse 40. And of course, many of you, or those of you who are my friends, know that I'm Catholic. And Pope Francis in 2017 said, "Where there are Christians, let there be an oasis of mercy." So, it's through those two prisms that I'd like to address a few things. About the temporary shelter location, I recognize and understand the neighborhood's disappointment in the lack of conversation related to site selection for this temporary shelter location. Your unhappiness is understandable. Winter seems to come faster and faster every year. Planning for uses like these takes much longer than one would expect. After a time-consuming search for locations, I was presented with two options, neither of which is optimal for a long-term location, and given the approach of winter, a decision had to be made. Your anger and unhappiness is understandable. So, about the permanent shelter location, let me scroll down here a little bit. This is where the next step becomes most important. The thoughtful, methodical, transparent evaluation and discussion of the permanent shelter location needs to start sooner rather than later. Candidate locations from across all of Elk Grove should be evaluated based on the desirable characteristics. And I'll provide an example. Two years ago, was it Jason Ling, was it two years ago we did redistricting Mr. Lindgren? I think, time passes quickly. He led the redistricting discussion, and he started with the characteristics of what we wanted the maps to look like, right? There were characteristics like keep neighborhoods together, even population distribution and simplicity. We should be evaluating sites based not on the ease, but on the best attributes or the least desirable attributes. If we don't begin the process soon, the current situation is, will be a can kicked down the road. We owe it to our residents to have a full, open, transparent evaluation. It is uncomfortable conversation. It is very uncomfortable conversation, but as the future site will not be temporary, full transparency is necessary. Further, we need to consider what number we're planning for. Are we talking about 30 beds in the future? Are we talking about less than 30 beds? There may be options available where we do not have one large structure, perhaps smaller facilities spread equitably through the city, much like we have right now for E.G. Heart. We need to ensure that we do not have an over-concentration of the use in one area. While I don't believe one facility in an area has a significant detrimental effect, certainly a concentration of facilities does. And we cannot wedge every undesirable project into one concentrated area. There's more. You're like, Kevin, wrap it up, land the plane, buddy. So, last year, about the operations, last year, the city team accomplished what I would consider to be a very, very successful year. I will certainly acknowledge that there were a few complaints, some of them unfounded, and some of them were easily addressed. Overall, there was minimal impact to the surrounding neighborhood. This was accomplished through a working partnership with the Gathering In, social service organizations like Elk Grove Food Bank and E.G. Heart, local service clubs, churches, private citizens, and the city team. Lessons were learned to improve the operations. Further, given the grant's past decision and the change to our local ordinances, the city is poised to make an even better success going forward. If you know me, you'll know that, you will know, you know that I will never tell you to trust government. I'm a skeptical optimist. I'm the trust-but-verify guy. That's just the way I'm wired, and I don't mean it to insult anyone in government. I hope no one here is insulted because it's not about you. So, I'm not going to ask you to trust us. What I'm going to ask you to do is to allow us to build trust with you. The city team is committed to ensuring the successful safe operations of this temporary shelter and what I'm, and, excuse me, and what I'm asking you to do is allow us to build trust with you. If you see a problem that needs to be addressed, contact the Gathering In directly, and that information will be provided if it hasn't been provided already. If you see a public safety issue, call 911 or call non-emergency at 916-714-5115. And after calling the appropriate public safety organization, do not hesitate to reach out to me and inform me at my email, which is casepeas@elkrovecity.org. And while you're at it, don't hesitate to send an email to City Manager Jason Berman at jberman@elkrovecity.org. Just a couple of thank yous. I didn't see anyone here from Cavalry Christian Board, but I would assume that they're probably on the line watching. So, to the Cavalry Christian Board and congregation, thank you for allowing the city team to work with you. I recognize that the decision wasn't easy for you. The city team is committed to working collaboratively with you as we manage this very important city issue. And thank you for living the Word of Christ. Thank you for being an oasis of mercy. To the Gathering In, I'm looking forward to another successful year. Last year, your team accomplished some great things, and we've all learned a few things to improve. Based on last year and the changes we've made, I have expectations that we're going to do even better. And the staff, I'm landing the plane, folks. I promise I'm getting there. Again, thank you, staff. We have a solution that's workable. It's not perfect, but it's workable, and I believe the city team is committed to protecting the public interest. I intend to be part of the process. I want to be informed of our successes and, if encountered, any problems. And I need to reiterate, the selection of a permanent facility needs to be an open, fair evaluation of each site on its merits. We cannot allow over-concentration of uses in one area at the detriment of any one neighborhood. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Very, very well spoken. Vice Mayor, you're next.
I totally agree with Councilmember Spees in his comments. And I definitely look forward to this more longer process with the Gathering In and commend Sarah Bontrager for her hard work in finding a deal that is going to be workable and definitely going to be something that will allow for increased communication, increased awareness, and increased effort to make sure that we're helping people get back on their feet. I'm looking forward to the work that, and the partnerships that the Gathering In will have with E.G. Heart and with the Elk Grove Food Bank because it's important that we do our part to lend a hand up in being our brother and sister's keeper. It's very essential that we do our part, lean into the moment, and be the leaders that we think we are and believe we are. And I'm not just talking about the council, I'm talking about the Elk Grove community. When we see the opportunity to lift each other up, we do so, and this is another opportunity for us to do that once more. So, I want to thank you all. It's not an easy decision, but it's the right thing to do. And I look forward to this further engagement over the next few days and months and next few years. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Suen.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to echo some of Councilmember Spees's comments in terms of the city team looking to manage the homelessness situation. I do agree, it's not something we will solve at this level, but we will certainly do our best to ensure that it minimally impacts our community. And to that end, any, any solution that we do is not going to be tucked away, out of sight so that, you know, it's, we can all, you know, just ignore it or pretend it doesn't exist. No, it is going to be front and center. If the individual is not on your front lawn or on the street, the facility of which we house them will be somewhere that it can be seen, and that's something that I think all of us have to, have to come to grips with. I want to commend the city staff for their evaluation of the sites. I know, you know, I know that to some, it might feel like it was done without any input, but I do believe our city staff looked at everything that was out there, considered the costs, considered the timeline in which it would take to get things ready, considered the landowners that they would deal with, whether they could come to an agreement and consensus and contract to be there, and considered even the impacts to the surrounding or the individual council members, the districts, in terms of not wanting to greatly affect anyone. So, it was a difficult choice. It was a difficult task to ask anyone to do, and so I do believe they did the best they could, and I agree, this is a workable solution. And then, to the Gathering In, having a partner that did as well as they did throughout the entire year that we had last year, to go from, if you remember, the amount, the room, this room was full of skepticism and, and lack of support at that time, to go from that to people coming out and volunteering and bringing meals, it's really a testament to the operations of that organization as our council, our city, has experienced with this company. And so, I wholeheartedly support this agreement and this partnership, and I am hopeful that what Mr. Dietrich mentioned, Keith's mentioned about it, doing better and, at least to the same level it was done last year, will bring some comfort to the community as we move forward in looking for a permanent solution, but more so in continually managing this, the challenge of homelessness in our community. So, with that, I'll hand it back to the mayor.
Thank you, and I want to thank my council colleagues for your very thoughtful comments. I obviously support this agreement entering it with the Gathering In, but I know that we received a little bit of criticism when it comes to the process, and I just want to remind that the process was pretty much exact that what we did for our enhanced winter sanctuary. We identified a location, we informed the community, we invited the community to learn about the Gathering In and the work, the great work that was going to take place at the Rite Aid location. So, this was very similar to that, and I can assure you, as we look for a permanent, a permanent location, it will not only be an exhaustive process, but it will be an exhaustive community outreach process as well. So, I know, Ms. Albright, you were looking for some commitments. You have my assurance that this will be an exhaustive process, and I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Spees, that we need to begin that work sooner rather than later. I can tell you, as one of five, and as the winter months ended and our partnership had run its course, that we were running against the clock already, and it was frightening. What was frightening was winter was coming. Winter is coming, and it was going to come quickly. And the thought of not having something in place was frightening. We did an exhaustive search, let me assure you. Our staff are great people. They worked diligently. They looked at every district. This is an Elk Grove issue. This is not one pitting one district with another. As mayor, I look at the entirety of the city. And our staff did an excellent job, looking at existing locations, locations where we can do improvements, where there's vacant land that we would build something, perhaps we could purchase a property and rehab that. All of those have their own timelines. They just weren't going to be ready in time. And I like to think that God sent us an answer. We found someone that was willing to step up and be a partner with us because it does take a village, and that village includes Elk Grove Heart, our food bank, all of our amazing nonprofits who do so much every single day, year after year. You step up and you help our great community. And our residents step up and help our great community. When there were concerns with the Rite Aid site, the concerns from residents there, they showed up. They started to volunteer. They got to know the residents, and hearts were won. And I know in my heart that will take place again because we have a wonderfully compassionate community that always steps up. A lot of the uncertainty is not knowing what this is going to look like. So, this is where I encourage anyone that's listening and watching to come, see the great work that has already taken place from the Gathering In with tremendous results. We got to meet some of those residents who now have permanent housing and those success stories. That's worth celebrating and replicating because we know there is still much more to do. And I am absolutely proud of our city that we're not just about enforcement because even though the governor gave us the green light and the Supreme Court with the enforcement side of things, that doesn't solve anything. They got to go somewhere. This is the compassionate and right thing to do, is to step up and help. It is the job of us as the city to step up and help and our partners and our residents. For those of you who still have concerns, please come and volunteer, be a part of the process and the solution. But the good neighbor strategy that's in place provides some safety measures that we all should be proud of. The safety and security plan, the rules and regulations, having a point of contact, the community engagement, an open house, come in, see. And I can tell you, there were some skeptics in Old Town. I used to get those calls. I stopped getting them pretty quickly because they saw for themselves, and those fears were put to rest. I want to thank and recognize Cavalry Christian Church. I particularly want to thank my former boss, Don Harris, who helped in this process, and Pastor Dr. Philip Gudoe, and the entire executive board who stepped up and said, "Yes, let's work on this together. Let's work on this humanitarian cause together, and let's do the right thing." So, I want to thank all of you. I want to thank our staff. I want to thank our police department and our navigators. And I also, most importantly, want to thank the Gathering In. I look forward to working with you and partnering with you and seeing some more wonderful success stories in the coming years. So, thank you, and thank you, everyone, for being patient in this process. So, that concludes my deliberations. At this time, I will look for a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, next item, 9.2.
Let's consider an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 2.04.010 to increase Section 2.04.010, to increase city council member salaries.
Good evening, Council. John Hobbs, your city attorney. This is a continuation of the matter that we started talking about about a month ago with respect to potentially increase of council member salaries. Something I said, he left. Oh, sure, yeah. I'd do my best.
All right, if you want to, you can start now, or we can wait for Councilmember Robles.
I can start. Some of this is going to be a repeat of last time. He's already heard it.
Yes, he can hear it all there.
He can hear it back there. All right, so this is a potential increase of council member salaries. Again, we started talking about this about a month ago, and council directed that we bring it back. I'm going to go through the presentation. Some of this is going to be a repeat and refresher. Or it's not going to move at all.
There you are.
There it is. All right, so council member salaries are set by state law. As a general law city, we're limited by population as to how much council member salaries can be set. In 2012, consistent with state law at the time, the council set the salary to $800 per month, and that's codified in our municipal code. In 2023, SB 329 was passed, allowing general law cities such as the City of Outgrove to increase council member salaries based on population. Based on our population, the council can increase their salaries up to $2,550 per month. In doing so, if you're going to make a change in salary upward, certain legislative findings need to be made. Our legislature has made certain findings that increasing salaries, or excuse me, salary increases were not authorized since 1984, so it's been a while. And also that increasing salaries could help economic diversity across the council, which could increase representation. The process requires that it be done by ordinance, which requires two reads as a typical ordinance. This would be the first read tonight if the council so chooses to move it forward. The council is not allowed to have automatic increases. It always has to be brought back to the council for a vote. And the council would need to make findings demonstrating the need for the increase should you be so inclined to increase the salaries this evening, followed by a second read at a future council meeting. So at the last meeting, this was discussed on August 28th. The council directed the staff bring a matter back. They've done so in your packets. There is a draft ordinance that increases the salary up to $2,550 per month. That would be the maximum salary that the council could increase it. You don't have to go to that amount, but that's the maximum that you could increase it. So we put it at that amount to give you flexibility. If you're so inclined, you can pass the ordinance on first read tonight, either at that amount or a lesser amount. We would bring the ordinance back for second read on October 9th. Under state law, the increases are not effective until any new council member, including the mayor, assumes a new term of office, which for us happens in December of 2024. And that completes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions you might have. And he's back, right when I finish.
Guess he just didn't want to hear it from you, sir.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll open up public comment opportunity. We have one speaker, Lynn Wheat.
So some of this might be a repeat. I'll just hold it up. So tonight, this is the raise that you can give yourselves, salary and benefits for the mayor, and then for you council members. And I'm hoping that there are some watching, since there's nobody here in the room, three of us and staff, and of course you. So I've been going out to a couple group meetings and talking to some individuals. And there are some in our community who can hardly make their rent. But our generosity, there's others that are helping them make ends meet. I would suggest that you have some mechanism for all of you to be evaluated in the jobs that you're doing when we've lost millions of dollars in some, what I believe were unnecessary lawsuits. I just don't know. I come to all the meetings, I'm not sure what to critique you by. When I've talked to some people that are going to be living next to the zoo, they weren't very excited about it. They bought a new home thinking that they were going to have something else there and imagine their surprise. So I know you'll make the decision, speaking to empty chambers other than the staff. The staff do a marvelous job. I actually think that they should get a 300% raise. But you'll make your decision, and here I am. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is our final speaker to this item. So I will close public comment opportunity and start to the left. Councilmember Suen.
All right, thank you, Mayor. I just think it's pretty simple to me in terms of, since 2012, there hasn't been an adjustment. But I'm supportive of doing an increase. But I'd like to actually hear from my colleagues in terms of, you know, what that looks like, what that amount would be.
Vice Mayor.
After, I mean, I've talked to several people in the community. And everyone who I've talked to, especially after I explained all of the specifics of not only this, but also the state policy itself, and also the history of the last, going back to 2012. And I find that people are surprised to realize that we are part-time in our public service as the duties of city council members. A lot of folks have an understanding that what we do as public service and what we do, we do for the people. I think people are surprised to learn that all the meetings, all the committees we belong to, and our openness and transparency in being available to the public 24 hours a day via cell phone, via email. People are surprised to learn that we have full-time jobs outside of our part-time jobs. But this is the job that we chose, and it's a job that we take freely. And as some of my friends have told me, it's like this is a job that is definitely quite an honor, but it's a job that should not be treated as being paid for less than what you are truly worth. As the saying goes, know your worth. I know there's a, what we talk about is the money that we get in our direct deposit. And that's the money that we go by for our salaries. And to see the upgrade to the maximum amount of 2,550 is not for this council. This is really not for us. This is for future councils. As people come into the role, folks will want to see that they're stepping into a duty of public service, but something that will allow them to help make ends meet. And for the money that they receive, if they feel that they can use that money and donate it, they can do so. But it's the option, it's the discretion that you have as an individual council member. I have not heard any negative comments over the last two weeks. And I have been engaging and talking to people about the issue. And people say that, no, as a council member, this is fair. This is a fair amount. And it looks like something that, after a while, and I have struggled with this too, I feel that this is something that I can support.
Thank you, Councilmember Spees.
Okay, thank you. So I'm not going to go over my observations from last time. But I do have a few more, and they'll be brief. But I will remind folks that I'm, well, this is actually different. So I'm uncomfortable with the timing of this item. The time to discuss raises would have been prior to closing of filing for city offices or after the election. Just my humble opinion. When we consider raises for, and so there'll be a quiz. There's a question after this. Ms. Rojas, Mr. Berman, be ready for this one. When we consider raises for represented and non-represented employees, we go through a process. And so I'm going to ask one of you to explain, particularly as it relates to the 80th percentile. Who wants to take it? I should have told you I was going to ask this question before. I'm sorry for the late night quiz.
No problem, I can take a shot at that. So we have a list of comparator agencies, where we look at the agency size, the services that are provided. And we look at the total compensation, and we see where our total compensation lines up to make sure that it's at the 80th percentile of that market.
Okay. So essentially, what we tell represented and non-represented is that this is what we believe the marketplace looks like comparative to our sizes. This is the list, and we want to get a target of the 80th percentile. So that, you know, and to put it mildly, we're not going to be paying the best. We're not going to be paying anywhere near the worst, but we're going to pay a place where you're safe, or, excuse me, where we feel that you are well compensated for what you do. That's the process we do for them, right? In a high level, okay. I guess I'm concerned that, given the situation, we aren't following the same process for ourselves as we do for employees. And I have a concern that when we have labor contract negotiations, I'm concerned that we're going to be faced with the rules for thee and not for me. So, yeah, we can take the 300% raise by law, but my question is, is it the right thing to do? Second thing, I recognize that $2012 do not equate to $2024, right? And I got this from Department of, I forget which one. It's about the inflation. The dollar has had an inflation rate of 2.46% per year between 2012 and 2022, producing a cumulative price increase of 27.47%. So if you want to have the same dollar as you had then, you would have to increase that dollar by 27.47%, right? Okay. The next observation I have is that, or question I have is, has the scope of city council work changed since 2012? Yes, there has been an increase in population since 2012. But overall, I'd say the scope of our work hasn't changed. We still aren't a full-service city. No parks, rec, fire, sewer, water, et cetera. And we even transferred operations of public transit to RT. Okay, so those are my observations. So with that, I am comfortable with voting no. I'm prepared to do so, I mentioned that last time. I'm also comfortable with a 27.47% increase to get the same $800 in today's dollars, right? And then my last one is that I'm open to a three-person citizen committee to evaluate our positions and provide a recommendation for increase. But I would ask that at least one of the participants be a resident that is typically critical, or at least skeptical of the city council. Lastly, good people can disagree. There's no ill intent in my observations. I'm not throwing shade, no sideswipes, no bad feelings. But as we're discussing a self-serving topic, I believe that for me, I have to express all of these concerns with full transparency. I know that you're all committed to that as well as I am. I just have to be very clear with my truth as I see it. So that's where I am with it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Robles.
Thank you, Councilmember Spees, for those comments. And thank you to all my council colleagues as well. I continue to say that this isn't about us. It's about the next folks who will come up. It's about the next person of color. It's about the next single mom. It's about the next single father, who will be one step away from losing their job and who, through this, can be able to afford paying rent or be able to provide for food or insurance or what have you. I understand that this comes to a shock to many, but we're looking at the future of who will be the next people who will take Outgrove to the next generation. This isn't about us. We don't have the voices of the unheard yet. You know, we never know who's going to be running later on. So for me, this is what I stand, and I'm in full support for the increase.
Okay, my turn. Thank you all for your comments. So my observations, so Senate Bill 329 was signed into law in June of 2023. And it was done so through the legislative process of, you know, they looked at why. The legislature found that compensation schedule for general law cities have not been adjusted since '84. It has not kept pace with inflation. And it does allow for more diversity of backgrounds and economic status. But I will say that we are pretty diverse, which I'm very proud of. But again, it is, of course, not just this council, what future councils. But it's, you know, at the end of the day, we are the second-largest city in the region. And we're pushing at 200,000. And I think it's the same concerns that prior councils just sort of kept pausing and pausing. And so I think it's ripe now for the discussion. I think, Mr. Spees, you mentioned an evaluation and a commission and something like that. Elections are evaluations of our performance. And I'm comfortable with that being the process. Is it the optimum time? I don't know the right or wrong answer of whether or not this is the optimum time. But I do know that prior councils have wanted to have these discussions, and here we are. Councilmember Suen, did you have something?
Oh, well.
You put your microphone on.
You brought that, prior councils. And so, I mean, we've broached this conversation a couple of times, and we did nothing with it. So even if we, even if you did something today, from past history, you know, you could talk about today's dollars in 2024, but whatever we do today, I'm betting will not be addressed again for maybe 12-plus years. So that doesn't seem to, I don't think that's a valuable conversation. And then, I mean, when you look at, a lot of councils have the same duties, right? But then the legislature put forth valuations according to population. They didn't put it according to services rendered or, you know, how long somebody spends there. And then when you look at 80th percentile, so are we going to look at, I mean, City of Sacramento is much larger than ours, but you can look at, you know, Isleton, for instance. You have, I think, council members in City of Sacramento get paid like $90,000. So we're talking about 800, and we're talking about...
Citrus Heights adjusted too recently.
So, yeah, I mean, all these, people try to like, oh, 300%. I mean, 300% of $800, folks. There's not, we have a $300 million operating budget that we have decision-making responsibility for. And the increase in council compensation annually is, if you do the increase, the increase is $21,000. This is the numbers we're talking about here. So, you know, I don't know. I just, I just think that it, you know, nowhere, I don't think in the history of anybody has been compensated. And to my knowledge, every single city compensates their council members. They don't forego any increase for 12-plus years. And in terms of inflation, 2021 was 7% inflation. 22 was 6.45% inflation. So I understand the average might be 2%. But, and actually, all of that, no one's making a living off of this. I mean, the entire maximum, you're still below extremely low income in terms of living wages. So, and none of us here rely on this, expect to rely on this as our, you know, form source of income. Again, one, no one's doing it for the money, per se. And two, this is not something that you're going to be going out and getting rich off of. So I do understand the principle argument, though, I really do. I'm just not in agreement with it. And so, and again, to that end, I'm looking to my colleagues to see what they feel, you know, is the amount that they want to do. But I'm supportive of the increase.
Mr. Brewer?
I partner my comments with Councilmember Suen.
So there's a discussion at the, on the floor on the amount?
And I, I think I said in my comments earlier that I'm for the amount of going up to 2,550.
Is that your-
That's my, that's my, that's my decision.
Councilmember Suen?
Okay, I could support that.
Councilmember Spees, we know you're no. Councilmember Robles, on, on that number, or do you have an alternative schedule?
Comfortable with the 2,500.
All right. Well, I do see the will of a majority here, so I will go with the majority of what you're putting forth with, and then going back to the comments that I made, that the evaluation process are called elections. So if this is bad, it opens up the door. Future, whether it's this November, future Novembers, any other opportunity, those are our opportunities to make changes. So I-
I go back to, you know, looking at the next gen who will come after us. And, and I say that because we, the notion when you run for office, it's folks who are well-off. And that statistically is proven in, in the United States. It's folks who are well-off and then continue going in public service. We, we don't know who the next folks are going to be. We're not, again, when it comes to family, when it comes to single parent, we don't understand the struggle that's going to be there. So that's why it's, this isn't about us. It's about the next folks who are, will be coming up after us. And you said it took 12 years. 12 years from now, I'll be 40-something, right? We're looking further out. And it's about making sure that we look at the next folks. So I'll end it with that.
All right. I'm looking for a motion. Unless you want to talk more on numbers. Are we, I heard some agreement on the amount?
I moved.
All right. Councilmember Robles made the motion. I need a second.
A second.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
Motion passes for one. Next item. Let's see here. 9.3. Consider appointment of voting delegate and alternate to the 2024 League of California Cities Annual Conference. At, Mr. Lindgren, did you need to say anything?
Very brief. Annual event. Comes around in once a year. We've got October 16th to the 18th. The general business session will be on the 18th of October, and they're down in Laguna Beach, I do believe. Long Beach. Thank you.
All right. Well, I know I'm going to be there doing a presentation on good governance, which I'm very excited to do, but I'm going to take myself out of the consideration. Who's aching here? I think, Mr. Robles, you seem to be very excited about this opportunity.
I'll do it. I love the League of Cities, especially when it comes to advocating for our cities and our city, and then the smaller cities in the state of California, so.
And then I need an alternate.
Yeah, I'll be the alternate. I was looking to go myself, but I didn't, I don't need to be the voting member, so that's fine. No, that's fine. I'm happy, I'm happy to be the alternate.
No, at first, I was, I was considering being a voting member, but-
It's a lot of excitement for this.
But, but knowing my potential conflicts of interest as issues arise, no. I'll gladly step aside on this one. And I'm also, but I'll be involved with the, with the league in other different capacities and as a city council member and not as a corporate representative.
Excellent. So we have two that are interested. We've got Councilmember Robles, and then Councilmember Suen as the alternate.
Mayor, assume there's no public comment on this.
I, oh, sorry. Yes. Opening up public comments. Nobody signed up. I'll close public comment. And those are our motions for Councilmember Robles and our alternate, Councilmember Suen. All right. Very good. Next item. Okay, this is, I'm going to convene the city council and finance authority joint regular meeting. Clerk.
And with a visual roll call, I'll note that all members are present for the finance authority as the city council stands as the Elk Grove Finance Authority. I did want to make a note that the members of the city council do not receive any additional compensation for their service on the Elk Grove Finance Authority. And with that, I will move on to item 10.2 and let staff take it from there because the title is really long for this item.
Yeah, I'm not reading that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Matt Paul, and your finance director. I had to present the item of the Laguna Ridge Revenue Bonds Series 2024. So as you all may know, it takes a village to go to market to sell debt, and we have a really good, solid team that we've used for many years, actually, for, to sell Laguna Ridge bonds. So we need bond and disclosure councils supplied by Jones Hall. Fieldman is our FA. Piper Sandler is our underwriter. MBS is our special tax administrator. Integra is our appraiser, and US Bank holds our funds and trusts until we draw them down. So the history here with the Laguna Ridge CFD, we have a capital and a maintenance CFD. This is the capital portion. It was established in 2006 with a maximum debt issuance capacity of 225 million. We've done five issuances to date, so we have little over 48 million issuance authority left in the district. Our issuance tonight before you is a little over 14 and 1/4 million. Our cost of issuance for that financing team, they don't do it for free. We need to pay them for their services, so that's, it's about a little over 488,000. I apologize that the tick to your interest cost is a typo. It's correct in the staff report. It's actually 4.69%. And that was as of a few weeks ago. So we know that that's going to be less, given the Fed's recent half a percent interest rate cut. So we'll try to get as good of a deal as we can when we go to market here in about three weeks. As we typically do with Laguna Ridge debt, our proceeds are split between two-thirds to the developers, who are participating, and one-third for the city for, for projects. And these funds are eligible for any public improvements that are outlined in the district documents, including impact fees as well. So as I said before, we're planning to close on October the 23rd. We go to market. It's actually a lot of fun for me and the team. We price these bonds. We try to judge kind of where the market is. Then we actually go to market. We have a live market view on the orders that come, and that's the underwriter's job, is to sell our debt, to market our debt to institutional and individual investors to purchase our debt. So it's exciting for us to see what orders coming on the day. We get live updates and everything. It's, it's a real kick for us. So that'll happen in a couple of weeks, and then we'll close in about a month from now. So as I said, the market conditions when we go to market will dictate what our final interest costs and net proceeds will be. So I mentioned the developers who are participating in the project. There's three of them. Arbor Ranch, through the New Home Company, over 260 single-family units. Poppy Meadows, through Beazer Homes, over 100 single-family units. And the Poppy Grove Apartments are nearly 390 multifamily units. As I've mentioned already, the originating documents for the district say how we can use the funds, and they can be allocated for public improvements, including payment of impact fees. So the structure of this series is going to be identical to what we've done before. It's not going to change any other terms. Every issuance is its own entity. This issuance doesn't change any of those prior issuances that I talked about during the history. Of course, they're supported by property tax assessments that are going to increase by 2% annually. We have 27-year bonds before you tonight, not 30-year, because we're going to stop collecting the taxes in 2051, so we can only go 27 years. And as I just said, that the final assessment is going to be in 2051. So there's always compliance requirements that we have to adhere to when we issue debt. There's some new ones recently from the state, from Citi Act, that we have to report to them. The bond council is helping us cover. We have a city debt policy that we have adopted. We talk about the pre-issuance estimates. Those are in the staff report, so everyone has a clear, transparent idea of the costs of what we are bringing for you tonight. We also have ongoing disclosure for all of our issuances, not just this one that we take very seriously, that we partner with MBS. They help us adhere to all those ongoing disclosure commitments. So we will continue to stand by those. Underwriting services, one of the actions before you, talked about the underwriter who, who prices, markets, and sells the debt for us. And if debt goes unsold on the public markets, they actually purchase what's left over. So there's some amount of risk for them in this process. It's Piper Sandler. We've worked with them on every other issuance on Laguna Ridge. They have a very deep understanding of the district and what it takes to issue debt there. So we value their services. So we recommend that we continue using them for this debt issuance. And there's an engagement letter that we'd like your approval to go forward with tonight. So again, our recommendation, there's a number of resolutions since you're acting as both the council and the authority to approve the bond issuance and the financing agreements, to approve using Piper Sandler as the underwriter, and to approve any necessary budget adjustments with, with these bonds and the proceeds. So happy to answer questions.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare the public hearing is open and open up public commentary. I have one person signed up to speak, Lynn Wheat.
Good evening again. So first, I want to thank staff. I had several questions from reading the report, and they answered them thoroughly for me, and I really appreciate it because not all of this I understand. But I just want to read one answer, one question that I asked in the answer. If the debt service of the 2024 bond is to be borne exclusively by those property owners of the projects listed in the report, do you have an estimated annual tax to each individual property owner for that bond? The annual tax assessment for the CSD is defined by the district's formation documents. All assessed property owners will pay $2,142.36 in fiscal year 2024 to 2025. The assessment is scheduled to increase by 2%, by 2% a year in accordance with the formation documents. And then they listed where I could see the staff report in detail. So thanks again for answering my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is now closed. And look for motion one.
Motion one?
And just to note that as we go through motions one through four, there'll be kind of an exchange of hats that you'll be wearing as the city council. For motion one, you will be taking action as the city council, and your city clerk might bump in about which hat you're wearing when you make a motion.
Thank you. So I heard a motion. Did I hear, could I second? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Current hat is the finance authority at this point for motion two and three.
Motion two?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion three?
Motion three?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, members of the finance authority for that. We now switch hats one more time back to the city council.
Excellent.
Motion four?
Can I get a second?
I'm trying to hear from the right side of the room, but okay, second.
Okay, and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And that passes.
Rowdy finance authority, we are.
Right.
All right. So now we will adjourn the joint Elk Grove City Council slash Elk Grove Finance Authority meeting at 8:23 PM. And we are back to our regular meeting. This is council comments, reports, and future agenda items. I, I'm going to go first because I just can't wait to share this. Hot off the press, Senate Bill 739 was just signed by the governor, our zoo bill.
Yes.
So I just got a message from Senator Ashby, so we thank her for all of the hard work and everyone, and thanking the governor for signing a very important and meaningful bill for our city. Now I will start to the left. Anything to report out?
I'll wave and report. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
We had our Sacramento RT board meeting on, was it Monday? And tomorrow, Councilmember Spees and I will be in, will be participating in the Sacramento Public Library Joint Powers Authority Board Meeting at the county administration office at 3 o'clock.
Excellent. Councilmember Spees?
Always a riveting time. I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
Nothing to report.
Okay. I attended STA SAC RT and filled in for the homeless policy. And that concludes my report. And before we adjourn, I want to adjourn in the memory of John Hall, who passed away fighting a terminal illness. A brave battle. I know that he participated with the city and with our blog. Kristin, I don't know if you want to say anything specific, but I know he was a dear friend of yours as well. But we value all of the great work that he contributed, not only to our city, but the Elk Grove citizen, our youth, our the sports world, and many others. Did you want to add anything? Okay. So may his memory be a blessing, and we thank him.
And also want to adjourn in memory of longtime labor leader, Sacramento Central Labor Council, Bill Camp. He passed away earlier this week. And he was another person who's, who's been a bright light for, for working families in, in the Elk Grove region, but also the Sacramento and beyond. And stood up for civil rights issues as well as workers' rights issues. And, and definitely a, a good resource and, and friend and mentor to, to many people who, who represent this region across the aisle, Democrat or Republican. Bill Camp always had a door open for, for you. And so definitely another major loss to our community as well.
All right. Thank you, and may their memory be a blessing to everyone that knew them. We will adjourn at 8:26 PM. Thank you.